All right, good morning everyone. Called order our meeting, it's Wednesday, October 2nd.
Mr. Sotomayor?
President.
Vice Chair Harris?
President.
Chair Weymeyer?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
President.
Commissioner Dickinson?
President.
Stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the Republic which is the one nation under God. Liberty and justice for all.
Let's our heads prepare. Well, we thank you so much for allowing us another day. A day of the opportunity to serve our community. We ask that you would lead us, guide us in all that we say and do. And may your name be glorified in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Correspondence organizational business. First of all, we'll get an update on the Moonrise Bike Ride event. Morning. Jeff? Are you Jeff?
Yeah, I'm Jeff. Yeah, good morning. Thank you for letting me say a little bit about Moonrise Bike Ride. So yeah, I am the owner of Auto Bike and Trail here in Ottawa. And I want to tell you a little bit about our Moonrise Bike Ride event. It happened first weekend of September after Labor Day, 5th, 6th, and 7th. And Moonrise Bike Ride is a bikepacking, bluegrass music, and food festival centered around Franklin County, Ottawa, and the Flint Hills Trail. We gather on Saturday, ride out to the trail, ride out to Pomona Lake State Park where we, all the festivities take place. We cap the night off with a ride around the lake with all of our lights going. And then we ride back, we have breakfast in the morning and ride back to Ottawa on Sunday morning. We have incredible food. We have Ang River BBQ does a prime rib dinner. We have a cheesecake bar, all this kind of stuff's included. And it's become a very popular event. I want to first of all, thank all of you. We requested a tourism grant from Franklin County, which we received. And we used that to help promote the event. We bought advertising with it. We put together some little postcards to send out. And it was very successful. We had 300 participants this year, which was twice what we had the previous year. And we even had to cap the registration because we were concerned about our ability to handle more people. But we had a long waiting list. And so it's become a very popular event. I provided some attendance demographics for you all so you could kind of see what the impact was there. Of the 300 participants, most of them were from outside of Franklin County. All over the state, we even had people from 10 different states, including somebody that flew all the way from Hawaii to participate in the event with a friend of his that lived nearby. So it's become a very popular event. And we had riders of all ages. The other interesting thing for us is in the cycling world is over half of them were women, which is unusual for a bicycling event. Usually it's really heavily weighted towards men. So I think we've hit on a formula. It's a pretty unique event in the bicycling world. But all of these people spent multiple days in the area. Some people arrived early. We spent the entire afternoon on Saturday in downtown participating in the first common consumption day. So we had people in town spending money at restaurants, at hotels, shopping for that weekend. And it's, you know, I think been a pretty good economic driver. Part of the reason we want to host this event and other events that we do, we do two bike rides every week. We just hosted another race. We sponsored a race actually last weekend called the Bad Astra that brought people to town. And, you know, part of our belief when we started the business is that Franklin County can become the bicycling destination in the state of Kansas. We really believe that with the trails converging here and with all of the gravel roads that surround, they're part of Franklin County, it's an incredible place for cyclists to come. And part of our inspiration for that was what's going on in Emporia. I don't know if you're familiar with a big race they have there called Unbound. It used to be called Dirty Kansas. They attract 10,000 people for one weekend for a race. It's a huge economic driver for Emporia. And it's become the gravel cycling center for the entire world. We have people coming from all over the world to that event. And Kansas is becoming recognized as the cycling destination for gravel cyclists. Gravel cycling happens to be the largest growing segment of the bicycling industry. So there's a huge impact. And I, you know, and being part of that, I see it, but I don't know if everyone else really understands that. And so I think that puts us in a unique position with the trails that we have here, with our proximity to all the big cities to really be known as a great place to come ride your bike, travel to, you know, be in Franklin County. And we, you know, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to promote that. And I just wanted to make you aware of that and sort of get you thinking about that as a potential place to prioritize some of our tourism dollars. And to figure out, you know, maybe you share our belief. I'd be happy to participate and help you with that. And maybe we can come up with a way together to make Franklin County the bicycling destination. We're going to continue to promote it that way. And we hope that we can get, continue to work with the county and with the city to help promote that. I think it's a great thing for everyone. Everyone benefits when people come to town and spend money here. And that's what we're trying to do. So mostly wanted to come just to say thank you. And we're already planning for next year. We don't know if we can make the event bigger, but we're certainly going to make it better every year and continue to try to attract people. So just want to let you know about that and say thank you. So also open to any questions that you might have. Yeah.
They don't have that overpassed done yet?
Not yet. And that's going to be a huge, huge impact. I think that's going to really make more people come down because it's sort of a barrier at the end. You know, you get outside.
I've gone that far.
Right. It's kind of a barrier. You have to go around on a gravel road. When that's done, it's going to be smooth sailing all the way from Osawatomie through Ottawa, all the way to Council Grove. And, you know, people will.
I know they've had some barriers to that. Do you have, do they have a timeframe again?
You know, they aren't announcing a timeframe, but I'm told it's, the barriers were overcome. And it's, what I'm hearing is by the end of the year, they should be open.
This year?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
So I, you know, who knows what could happen between now and then? But that's what I'm being told. There's no official word, but yeah. And so I think we'll, we'll schedule events around that. I'm sure we'll have a big, at some point, a big celebration of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if everybody up here knows, but you opened a new storefront.
Yeah.
So now you have two storefronts in Ottawa and doing a chamber coffee on Friday to announce that.
Friday mornings are open house for our new, we're calling it the Auto Bike and Trail e-bike outpost. Just the e-bike business has become a big part of what we're doing. And it takes up a lot more space and different types of equipment. So we had to open a little extra small spot to handle that. So yeah, it's been great. And, you know, I also forgot to mention, we're seeing people come every week. So, you know, our events are not huge, but we see people coming every single week to ride the trails. In fact, yesterday I had a lady stop in, her and her husband from Arkansas. They came up, they're spending three days in the area just to ride the trails. And we see it every week. People come in every single day to participate and ride the, ride around on the trails. Yeah.
I was talking to a guy yesterday. He said they was going to go ahead and go from Council Grove out to Harrington.
Yeah. Yeah.
That'd be.
Eventually, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's another 20 mile segment to Harrington that's on the plans. I don't know exactly, I don't, there's definitely no timeframe for that. But that allowed another, we already have 92 miles on the Flint Hills Trail and about 60 miles on the Prairie Spirit Trail. So that'll add another 20. But it's still, it's a lot. Yeah.
On the Moonrise event, what are your barriers to going past 300? You talked about maybe wanting to grow it, considering growing it, but.
Yeah, I think we're a very small staff. We have four full-time people. So I think part of that is just our capacity to handle the weekend. So we just need to rethink that. And then also the food. We, we're trying to provide, I mean, we have a, the prime rib dinner that we have. People talk about it year-round. I thought about, you know, going to something a little bit less expensive. And the feedback I got was, don't change it. So just that kind of, you know, feeding 300 people is kind of difficult. So that's probably our biggest concern, yeah.
What did, I don't have it in front of me. What did we, somewhere, but shuffle around at a desk. What did we end up putting in for?
Yeah, I got a $500, yeah, which helped a little with the advertising. Obviously, it worked. But we might, you know, we'd love to have more just to continue to improve the event. And also.
What would you do with more?
Yeah, I would, I would definitely use it to probably sponsor some of the music, probably. Yeah, so I can bring bigger bands and stuff. I don't know. I really have to think about that before I apply again.
I mean, you're kind of capped on capacity.
Yeah.
And then you got a waiting list, so advertising wouldn't make it.
Yeah, honestly, I think what I'd really like to see is maybe not more for just that one event. But I would like to see some ongoing marketing. We're working on, one of the big challenges, people, surprisingly, they come to town, they're like, they don't know where the trails are. They don't know how to get on the trails. They don't know what businesses are around that could support them. So we're working on a little guidebook, like a field guide, that we can print and hand out to people that has all that information. So I'd probably be more interested in tourism money to support something like that. And it's, you know, we've been working on it for about a year. We're probably, this winter, when we're slow, we want to try to get that going. So I'd probably ask for tourism money to support something like that, that has more of a year-round impact. And I think that's where the real opportunity is, yeah. I mean, I think this event surprised us that it sold out so quick. It'll probably sell out much quicker this year because people know. So I don't know if we would use it in the same way. I'll have to think about it, yeah.
No, the car show started pretty small and it got bigger. And it only got bigger because it got, it had volunteers from the community.
Yeah.
Maybe that's where you need to be is to figure out how you can, how you can, you know.
Yeah.
People are like, yeah, we want to help make this bigger.
Yeah.
You know, we're not bike riders, but what can we do?
Yeah.
And then maybe that's where you need to go.
I think that's right, yeah.
Well, this is great.
What constitutes a bike?
A bike?
Yeah. You allow all kinds of different.
Yeah, bicycles, they have to be human-powered. So even the e-bikes are pedal assist. So you have to be pedaling to ride them. So that's, you know, pretty much what, what we, what we include, yeah. If it's, if it's got a gas-powered motor, it doesn't work. It's got, if it's electric motor, it has to be pedal assist. So you can't just ride it and hit the throttle. But, and we have a lot of electric bike riders on this event and even our weekly events, yeah.
At the, for the hurricane, I saw that people's e-bikes, all their batteries blew up.
Yeah.
And they got wet, so, well, and e-cars too.
Yeah, there are some challenges there with that.
All right, cool.
Jeff, I know we've sat down before, but please reach out. We'd like to talk with you about some of this.
Sure.
Certainly do feel like we have the ability to help out. I know you and I have talked about a lot of things and certainly willing to continue those discussions.
Yeah, sounds great. We'll definitely take it on that.
Things like this help a lot because it's not just us necessarily saying yes or no. We also have to be able to defend our decision to the public and taxpayer listeners.
Oh, yeah, understand, yeah. Yeah, and I think there's just an opportunity to continue. And I'll work with Derek as well and, yeah, figure out how to continue to. Hopefully you all share my vision of making Ottawa and Franklin County the cycling destination. And the more people that think about it that way, the more things we can do, I think.
We know, and I don't want to get too far down a wormhole here, but we know, not just here, but everywhere, we have a mental health issue.
Yeah.
We know that exercise and physical activity helps.
Yeah.
With mental health. As an organization, we are trying to prioritize health and wellness. So this, what you are trying to do fits perfectly with what we are trying to do as an organization.
Right.
And I don't want to patronize you because I know you've thought about this. But obviously, the Dirty Kansas probably started with 300 people, some, I don't know.
Yeah, it started with 35 actually, yeah.
35 people, and it grew into this.
Yeah.
So whatever we need to do, I mean, obviously there are limits, but, but, you know, thinking big doesn't cost anything.
Yeah.
And so happy to brainstorm with you on what we can potentially do. Because you are right. Geographically, you know, we, I say this, we don't have the front range of the Rockies in Franklin County.
Right.
Like, we just don't. Like, we're never going to be a tourism mecca. We just won't be.
Yeah.
But we have bike trails.
Yeah.
And we have people that come to this community because they want to ride those trails. And so anything that we can do to prioritize that, I really think we ought to consider it.
Yeah.
Please reach out. If winter is a good time for you, then let's sit down and talk.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Feel free to come back a couple of times a year if you do.
Yeah.
Because I do think there's.
I definitely will. And I would just, I'll say one last thing. Economic driver too. I think if you, if you ever have a chance to go down to Bentonville and see what's happened down there, you know, Walmart made a huge investment in all of the bike infrastructure. And then the, part of the reason was to attract people there to work because they want to live in an environment where they can get outside and do things. And I think that's another thing we ought to talk about, yeah. Again, thank you, yes.
I'm surprised there's a gravel road enthusiastic group.
How many miles do they go? What is it?
Well, the Unbound is, they have a 200-mile race is what their big one is. They went to 100. They also offer 100, now they have a 350-mile race. It almost comes all the way up here. So, and it is, it's huge, just like the Indianapolis 500 for cycling. And we have world tour racers, people that race in the Tour de France are coming here to race it. It's incredible. And the econ, I forget what the numbers are, but the economic impact in Emporia, it's, they're probably one of the largest, probably the largest economic driver for them in tourism-wise, yeah.
Well, speaking for a woman, you probably had some in it because of that cheesecake bar, but.
And Emporia has a lot of success with gravel bikes and disc golf.
Yeah, disc golf's the other big driver. Yeah, it's huge, yeah. Exactly.
All right.
All right, thank you.
That's a good one. Thanks for that, an update from Franklin County Honors.
Good morning. Ms. Sherry's going to pass out our little information sheet for you. I'm Kimberly Bearclo and I'm the Vice President of Franklin County Honors. And we just wanted to come back to you guys. I think Buck probably talked to you the last time to get your approval for moving our veterans' display from City Park down to the courthouse. And I believe that you guys approved that, but said maybe something that wasn't quite so big. So we're just back to let you know, we've changed some things up, tried to give you a picture of what this would look like. We are no longer going to be using the military vehicles or the mannequins that sit everywhere. There's a lot of maintenance and time that go into those. And we just have decided it's really just not worth it, especially for the mannequin part and trying to get them to stand up for weeks and the wind and the weather, and it's just too much. And so we are doing away with those two items, so they will no longer be part of the display. In its place, we researched into having metal silhouettes cut so that it just, it looks much fresher and newer and just nicer. And so that was going to be a really big expense for us. And so we weren't sure quite how we were going to manage that. But we had a donor, after we did the chamber coffee back in May, we had a donor come forward that morning and donated a large sum of money because he wanted to cover every single silhouette that we wanted done. And so we have moved forward with that. And we are currently in the process of having those done. Another great thing is the company that's doing that for us is actually donating most everything. We're just paying for the actual metal itself. So the extra funds can go for us to move forward with other projects that we've been looking at. One of them is in May, having banners made for every name on the wall and have those displayed around Memorial Day. And if you have driven down Main Street, they are starting to put up our banners for Veterans Day. So we're super excited about that. We have a lot more banners this year to go up than we even did last year. That's just booming as far as that goes. So I just wanted you to take a look real quickly at the diagram. Derek did this for us and he did a great job. So you can see number one is where the field of crosses go, right there. And then number two, the Vietnam Wall. And then Flanders Field will be where the poppies go. And those metal silhouettes will kind of be interspersed depending on what silhouetted is as to what display it goes with. He did put on the back also just a little explanation of what each display is. So we just wanted to come back to you guys and just make sure that you were good with us kind of honing in, making it smaller but better, if that makes sense. Because I think it's going to look cleaner. It's going to look just more professional at the end of the day to have these silhouettes. We've looked at several other displays around Kansas and Missouri. And we like how the metal silhouettes look. They, they just look so much cleaner. Like I said, there's not guide wires all over the place trying to hold up these mannequins. And that was cool and it was, it was neat, but it got to be a lot to try and keep those up and together. And the mannequin was going to fall apart. And then you're always putting expense into that. These metal silhouettes should last us for years. And so anyway, so we're just coming back to you guys to kind of let you know the new plan moving forward and just asking that this is okay with you guys.
Last year, you had part of it at the courthouse and part of it at City Park. So this year, all of it would be at the courthouse?
So all of it will be at the courthouse and we won't have anything in City Park. So the last few years, we've tried to kind of take inventory on how much happens at City Park. And, and everybody's already downtown for the parade. They're, they're more gathered at the courthouse and that area. And so we just felt like we're trying to maintain and put all this time and effort into City Park, which is great, but it, I don't think it's being seen like we would like it to be seen. We feel like having it down at the courthouse, people are already there. Our hope is either they come a little early and they kind of just walk around the courthouse and look at it, or after the parade, they stay for a few minutes and walk their family over there and take a look at what's going on at the courthouse because that's where they already are. We do still plan to put flags by the sidewalk in City Park so that there is still something in City Park. We feel like that's important. But we just feel like moving these would be a greater advantage to the courthouse where people are going to visually already be there and see them.
I will say personally, I walked through the field of crosses last year when it was at the courthouse and actually read, was reading names and dates and all that. And I never did that one, it was at City Park.
Yeah.
So.
And we feel like it's just so important that people know. And we just felt like we had to get it in a new spot and then right in front of them.
Appreciate you working with us and taking the time to do this. I think we're on the same page as far as just what would be right for that space and keeping it, keeping it tidy so we can still use the building as we do.
I agree. I like the plan a lot.
And we're happy to have the company have the activity come down to us.
Yeah.
I agree with you. That's where the center of town is and that's where, where folks go.
Roy, you have any thoughts on this or?
Well, I think it's a good idea because we just weren't getting people down to City Park after the parade. So just to get a lot more people opportunities to take part in, on Veterans on Veterans Day.
Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Yeah, come on down.
First of all, I want to say, well, you can stay up here. I am so thankful for you guys. And Roy's been with us and Ottawa has been so good to us. And the parade will be on the 9th, right, this year? But I just wanted to thank you because you do not know how much you've meant to me. When I took this thing over, I didn't know nothing. And to be able to turn it over to hand, that these people are doing things I would have probably never, ever thought of. And, and as Roy knows, you know, you can do something so long, but some changes need to come. They're hard. But thank each of you for, for what you've done and for our community and everything you're doing now. So anyway, I just want to say thank you.
For what you've done.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure you're getting paid a ton of money to do it, but, but it takes people like you to make this happen.
Well, when I started the memorial, well, when we did the parade, I didn't know about starting a memorial. What, what do you do? And, but the community, this community is an awesome community to live in. So the passion's there for my veterans and all the family I have on that wall down there. And so I'm passing it on to them and my grandson, Buck Bradley. And so anyway, I just had to say thank you to all of you.
Appreciate you stepping up and saying something positive, you know? That's more or less common than the others, so. Some days I beg for it.
You are appreciated.
Thank you, as are you. All right, do we have any public comment today?
Nope.
All right. Item consent agenda today includes meeting minutes from September 5th. Claim vouchers are $952,918.07 and $7 cents. And payroll amount of $1,198,829.15. Your motion approved, consent agenda.
Motion approved.
There's a second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Our line of business is to look at buy-in, potentially a mini excavator.
Good morning, Commissioner. I, first of all, I want to thank you for looking at this today. I'm a little, I want to tell you, I've got a little over my skis a little bit, getting this on the agenda as quickly as I did. But it's twofold. One is the quotes are only good for a brief period of time. I have had some conversations with Janet. I do believe that regardless of how things turn out with some of the budgetary things we're doing on 50, we do have room in the budget to make this happen. I will be more comfortable when I know those numbers. But what I'm putting in front of you today, we rented a, it's a, it's a Sani Mini-X to do the widening project on Old 50. That has a rental agreement that is going towards the purchase cost if we so want to purchase it. It was far and away the lowest bid that we had. During that process, we also utilized both of these other skid, our mini excavators during that work process and basically had them side by side or on different days out there doing the work. All three are very competent machines. The Sani again is the cheapest that we have. In my past history, often when you go with the cheapest, you also will have some equipment repair costs later. So most of the employees would be, we would be graciously satisfied with anything you provide as far as Mini-X. This will give us the opportunity to not only do some of the widening that we've done, but this allows us to get into people's yards when we can't sometimes to reach into culverts and ditches where a skid loader is just not appropriate and our big excavator is just too massive. It, the real benefit will be to allow us to get underneath some of these bridge repairs where we just can't get there to move material other than by hand. Most of the surrounding communities that the county have a mini excavator and use it consistently. And I will tell you that since we have rented this one, we are using it consistently as well. So I would, I would, today would be very satisfied with the Sani if that was approved. I, I think what I would like to do is actually table this maybe for just a few more weeks until I know specifically where the money is and what we have available for us. Most of the employees like the Caterpillar. We've had a good service contract with it. The CAT does not include a bucket or a thumb on this price. I anticipate that I will continue to rent this at $3,000 a month and come back in a few weeks to. But the Sani would definitely be the cheapest way to go. And again, I think, the thing on the Sani is it has zero electronic. It's basically hydraulic over mechanical that has a light and a turn switch. So that alleviates a lot of the electrical issues that we would have. I, I'm supportive of the officer, or the managers have run both of them. They're, they're very comparable in power again, but we're, we've always been brand loyal to CAT. They've always given us good, the most feedback is the Caterpillar has more room in the cab. You can actually, you're not just scrunched. But any, I will be reaching out again in a few weeks if that'd be fine and table this. And I didn't mean to get out in front of it, but I will. I do know the Caterpillar is still available, but it is on the open market for someone else to purchase. So the quicker we can make those decisions, the better.
The used machine?
Yes, the, all three of them are, have a few hours, have a few hours on them.
What I would tell you, Jeff, and certainly am not going to talk you out of, or anyone out of the, you know, the best financial deal, but our purchasing policy states the lowest and most responsible.
Correct.
And so if you and/or your staff can articulate, and you have a little bit, a reason why the CAT would be better, oftentimes that may be a service relationship.
Correct.
If more room in the cab is tangible, then that's something. Again, I'm not, we come back and buy this Sani, that's great. That may be the lowest and most responsible, but it's, you know, there are some times where we pay a little bit more because it's more responsible to do so.
We, we, we don't know much about the Sani. I do know that there's other, other counties local that have bought them and been very satisfied with them. But long-term, just in having that relationship with CAT that we do on repairs and those, there is a value in that. And I appreciate you bringing that up, Derek. I will take that into consideration and definitely when I come back in a few weeks. So I guess, again, I kind of got in front of myself a little bit, but I, I wanted to let you know kind of where we're going with this. let you know kind of where we're going with this and, and when I, uh, have the opportunity, I'll put it back in front of you.
We can have a study section. That's good. I had a meeting last month and I, and there was some county commissioners there and I won't say what county they were from, but he was complaining about the equipment and the road and bridge. He said, we just, we just have a bunch of crap that just doesn't, you know, and, and all we're doing is, is repairs. And I'm like, I don't get that from you. And so truly sometimes.
Yeah.
What you pay for.
Yeah, exactly. And, and Jim Hague and David both were very, uh, skilled at getting equipment that was quality, not just the lowest bid. And I, I hope that I can follow in their footsteps in, in a lot of ways. Uh, on, on that same subject, and it's not on the agenda, but I do want to let you know, we do have, we talked about those dump trucks. I have spoken with the supplier and I told you last meeting that it would probably be at the end of the year. We have two more that Dave had scheduled to be replaced. We, we have a five dump truck rotation. They are changing after next year, the design of those trucks. It may be a situation where we want to really consider putting three on next year's agenda rather than the two that he had scheduled.
How are they tuned with design?
Um, the motor will be different. The DEF will actually be you, it, it doesn't have two tanks, but it will use twice as much DEF by the requirements.
Going to that new 2027?
Correct. Yes. And, and it, it, just for parts availability, it, it may be, uh, we would all be dealing with apples to apples if we had the same type of equipment. So those are things that I haven't had an opportunity to talk with Derek about, but I, I will have those hard conversations, uh, with him and, and we will try to put that in front of you as well. But I wanted you to know that may be coming, uh, where we actually, actually try to get three next year instead of just two.
Jeff, uh, these excavators, are they, it'll be, uh, so you can use them on hard surface roads too?
Yes. Yeah. They're, the, the power that they get out of these things and the capacity, the, the, the reason that we went with this size is I can actually put this and a skid loader on the same trailer. Uh, doesn't meet the GBW, it doesn't maximize the GBWs and we have the capability of moving them around really without even a CDL if we needed to. So getting them to the job site will be easier. Um, they're able to basically pick up and do anything. The cleanup after them, the bucket size is a little bit smaller, so some of the smaller culverts that we install, those type of things, it can just be utilized anywhere. Uh, we've been cleaning up culverts, um, with them. We've been using them to install culverts lately. They're all functional. It's just a matter of, again, quality versus, uh, where we want to go. I, I don't know much about Sani. I, I know they were the cheapest to, to lease and so that's how we actually had that on the project, but it, it did a wonderful job and, and fulfilled the needs that we, we asked of it. So, uh, uh, I, it would be something that we would use just about daily and during the construction season, it would give us another opportunity to do our, do our, to work our craft.
Are there any from the five of you, any concerns about potentially purchasing a mini excavator? I don't want Jeff to continue going down this path if there's reluctance.
They're handy.
They are.
Well, especially there's the, they're handy and, and, um, allow you to do things quicker, more efficient, but, um, we have a full-size excavator that's probably five times more expensive. And if you can.
Correct.
Keep hours off of it too, there's also a value there.
Correct.
About any municipality I know has one.
Yeah, just working in the cramped spaces around the bridges, it's, it's, it's night and day difference on the quality of work we can do and also the safety of the equipment and the employee.
You got the rental about up for a month or so, so you rent a CAT just for, like a minute and see if they like it a lot better?
I, I could. They've ran that CAT during that, that, uh, that same process and they, they are very comparable in power. And again, the, the comments I got from them, Rod, was just the cab size and just the, the more convenience and, and comfort in it.
I was just thinking if, if the proceeds go toward that.
Correct.
If that's kind of the way you're going, you might save.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to CAT and see if they're willing to do that. Again, the CAT does not include a thumb or a bucket. That could be an additional $10,000 in the cost from what you're seeing on the, but, but those are things that we might be able to maneuver and talk about.
Person that sure needs a thumb.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So.
It may also, if, if you can swing it, it would presumably keep it off the market if there's just one of them.
Correct.
And you swing an arrangement whereby we're renting it.
I see.
With the intent to potentially buy if it works.
Right.
I hate to.
I, I, I can reach out to Travis today. I spoke with him yesterday about it and made sure that the machine was still available and he said it was. So I can, I can, I can reach out to him today.
What are your thoughts, Cole?
I hate to even bring it up because I don't want to make this political, but the Sani's a Chinese-made machine.
It is.
The rest are American-made.
Correct.
They're all made with foreign components, so they're all made with parts that come from overseas, but, um, I mean, I think, uh, I've never seen a police vehicle that was made outside the U.S. Can you, can you purchase a Toyota for a patrol vehicles or any, I mean, I'm not, not suggesting it, but I've just never seen it. I didn't know if there's any. Gotcha, yeah. I just think.
And that, that is it. I, I have spoken with, with Roxworth who is actually representative of that. Again, I think it's a good machine. I know they have, uh, they have field service offices in the Kansas City area. We just aren't very familiar with that and.
Don't have the deal, the net that the others use.
Correct. You know, I, I, I think it's like anything else on resale, on, on just maintenance. It's, it's very easy to go with what we're comfortable and know.
I'm not trying to make mini excavators political, but I do think.
I understand.
Also a moral, I mean, we're taking American tax dollars.
Correct.
We, at least in some capacity, try to support an American job.
They can add a thumb to that then?
Yes, yeah. They, it would just be at a, at, at the expense that's not incorporated in the bid.
All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Staff reports, Derek?
Uh, have anything today? Um, need a executive session here and I can talk you through that, but that's it.
Circle back around. Sheriff?
I'm trying to make this real quick. Uh, yesterday we had, um, a new deputy that started. Um, just to remind you guys, this is to backfill for when we added, um, we're adding that position with, because of the SRO and Wes Franklin is taking care of that, of that salary. So, uh, it wasn't that we had, we're having people quit. It was because, um, of that and that, so we did get that filled yesterday, um, is when he started. He's already certified, so he's right into our training. So that's going to, going to, uh, kind of speed that process along. And then also at the end of this year, um, you, as you may have heard, uh, Cornell Longer is going to be retiring. Steve Longer will be retiring at the end of this year in November. And then Tony Schmidt, our office manager is also going to be retiring. Well-deserved retirements, um, but it does, it is going to create a whole lot of movement within our office. And so we have started the process, um, selection processes and so everybody knows where they're going to go and when they're, when we're going to make that. So hopefully it's all going to be a smooth transition, um, come December and January timeframe. But, um, as you know, whenever you get new, get people in new positions, sometimes there may be some hiccups. Um, so we're trying to just work through those as early as we can so that we can avoid those. And then the last thing I have is that you, you may know that, um, a while back we started doing VIN verifications. It was a service we wanted to do for the public. KHP typically does those and they were only here for a few hours a week in Franklin County. So we started doing those. Um, we are staying so busy with that that, um, we are trying to look to see, um, what we can do to kind of limit that a little bit. We've looked at agencies around us that do it and they usually offer them only a couple of days a week or things like that. We're very busy. We're not trying to, we started it so that we could be offering a service and so we're not wanting to really stop doing the service, but we, we're going to have to do something because it's keeping people off the road, um, on a regular basis to get in there and get those, those VINS done. So, um, we're, whenever we figure out what that is, we're going to advertise it well in advance so people will know and we're not wanting to shock the public with it, but we're going to have to do something to limit it just because of what the demand is for it. So anyway, I would answer any questions that the board has for me.
I'm hoping that Mr. Longer will let you do a celebration for him, a retirement celebration. So please make sure to let us know when that's.
Yes, and, and we, we're going to do one. It's not going to have the full-blown carnival effect that, uh, he has demanded, but you know. But, but we will, we will be doing a good retirement for him. Tony, on the other hand, um, has threatened me with bodily harm if we do a, uh, if we do a party for her. So we're going to do something way, way more low-key because I don't like pain. And so, uh, we will, we'll do something for her as well, but it's going to be very low-key. But, um, Steve, he'll, he, he's going to get the full, going to get the full deal, so.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Jeff, anything else?
Just a couple of quick things. Uh, on Old Fifty, uh, we have on the four mile stretch, Kilo has got this, the widening process completed. Um, they have started on the, the curves, building that up out there. I want to thank Tom for getting those signs up when he did. I do think that the public has been paying attention to that and reduced some of the traffic going through there. They are on schedule as we speak. It is still difficult to get through the process, but they are on the roadway right now building up the supers and getting ready to do the overlay. So, uh, it's, it's going just as we had hoped. I, I want to thank Commissioner Harris also. He's been helpful. This has been a very demanding project and Rod's knowledge and skills and ability to work with, uh, and, and just his, his, uh, his contact and, and with Kilo and, and working with him all those years has made a huge impact for me. So Rod, I, I appreciate what you've done for me out there on this. On the 12-mile stretch, we started pulling shoulders at, um, Homewood yesterday, headed west, so we stayed out of the, their way. We made it a few miles. We had a, we had a boom that broke down late yesterday afternoon. OCH County's allowed us to borrow theirs. Uh, so we have two on site, I believe, this morning, working that over. And I, I think they even let us borrow an employee to run it. So I want to thank O Sage and, and Ryan for, for allowing us to do that, to keep, keep rolling. Um, we should have those done in the next, within the next week and then we'll be mowing in spring out there and, and we, I've spoken with the paint crew. They are just basically on standby waiting for the, the work to be done. So, uh, they will be in, um, soon. I also spoke with the contractor that's going to come out. We've, I, I believe I've spoken to you about the scales out at the transfer station. They are going to do that next Thursday, Friday on the cleanout. That will, uh, be a thing that needs to be done before the winter. But they had that scheduled. We also are getting ready to do, I sent out, Kelly assisted me, but we sent out, uh, emails to all of the, the department heads on surplus items. And I will be reaching out to you next week about things that we wanted to declare surplus. I have, uh, met with most of the folks and we've, where that process has begun, we're gathering things that we can at the shop, but there's a lot of them that were just, um, and they should be here on the 15th. So if there's anybody out there that's still, the department heads that need to get that to us, probably no later than next Wednesday, so I can get that on the agenda. And that's all I got.
We decided what company we're using to sell stuff?
We're just using, uh, Gavel Roads is the, and they'll sell anything. We've, I think, I believe we used them last time and they do all of the legwork on it. We just have to put it in front of them and, and, uh, we have started gathering some of that in, those items and they're, they're locked in the shop at this point.
Cole, do you have thoughts or concerns on that?
I don't know anything about them, but you know that site?
I, I've looked through their site a few times. I, I mean.
The, the reason that we used them this time was they do take the responsibility. They put the information down and they carry the burden of the sale. And that is beneficial for us in a lot of ways. Um, we, especially when you're selling some of the bigger equipment and those things. But, but all we have to do is make sure that people show up, we get their tickets and they haul it out. But if you, if you have another.
Just, we've used Purple Wave in the past. I didn't know what we moved away from. I just, especially on the bigger items, having a big enough audience to run things up.
Yeah.
I mean, this, uh, Gavel Roads is kind of, uh, starting to pick up some speed.
Yeah, I just be, I was looking at the results, just, I mean, an auction takes.
Yeah.
Two people, not one.
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, that's something we can discuss going forward. It was just, they'd reached out to us because they'd done it last year.
Jeff, moving forward, um, let's you and I discuss.
Absolutely.
Who we're going to use. And, and I would like to make a recommendation to the board so that they can make that call.
I will make that happen.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's, it's not a massive financial deal, but it's policy and.
Well, and we want to get as much for this, these items as possible.
Nothing else? This will give us a, a second year to compare Gavel Roads with Purple Wave, as Cole has said, give us some more data points, but, but just one of those things I would like to discuss with the.
Absolutely. I'll make.
I don't know if they, they don't have a buyer premium on Gavel Roads, do they?
I don't believe that to, I don't believe they do.
There's a lot of online auction sites for equipment, but equipment doesn't travel well.
Right.
So it's finding the one that geographically is popular where you are, which for us is out of Manhattan.
Yeah.
At least there, I don't know where a Gavel Roads is. So just make, it's all about the, the results, what we end up getting.
Absolutely.
Especially the big equipment.
And I will make sure that we do that going forward.
All right.
Just a couple of things. Um, Commissioner Weymeyer asked me, uh, before the meeting, um, whether we were early voting or not. We don't start early voting until the 21st of October. Um, we will send out advanced ballots on the 16th and you can still register to vote until the 15th. Um, I encourage anyone who has any questions about their voter registration or, um, possibly needs to update their voter registration, are concerned about when, where, how they can vote, come in and talk to us. Give us a call on the phone. Um, we have all of our early voting hours on our website. So we have, um, four late nights till seven, two Saturdays. So we're offering a lot of extra hours to cover everyone. Um, but we've had a lot of questions about snowbirds and, um, things like that. So we want to help people get their ballot where they're at. So call us and ask us the questions. Um, we're happy to help direct anybody to us that has those questions. Um, I also am heading out to Eugene Field this morning to talk to the kids out there about registering to vote. I did Wes Franklin last week. Um, I'm trying to make a connection with Central Heights to get that done here in the next week. And, um, I visited with, um, Ottawa High School's, um, government, main government teacher yesterday and she's got, um, handling all of that at, at her location. So, um, if you guys have any other ideas of, of places that you've heard need some attention, do let me know. Trying to get out and hit all these places. So we have less to clean up at the end and the canvas. Um, it gets all done on the front end.
You've moved two of your polling locations from Trinity Methodist. Did you, you moved both of them from Trinity?
We actually, this year have moved three polling locations. Um, for the primary, we moved, um, Wellsville, um, Wellsville moved to the community center, um, at Seventh and Locust instead of, um, the Baptist church that we've hosted it at for years. Um, so that is a little bit of a change for folks. Um, we did move the location Trinity served, um, the first precinct, the second precinct and Peoria Township. And we moved that to Cherry Street Wesleyan on the north side of town. Um, we did have an error on that card and we had to send it out again, um, as a correction. It is on the north side. And, um, so that is all three of the precincts who've voted there previously. Much better parking situation, uh, much better entrance situation where people can stand inside if it's cold, if it's wet, if it's snowy, whatever it is. So, um, yeah, I know you guys have, have seen the pastor in here, Cherry Street Wesleyan Church, uh, doing your invocation. He was very helpful in the process. And we also moved Cutler Township across the street from City Hall to the township building. Again, just space inside, being able to get everybody inside out of the weather, and safety and security of our equipment. The city of Rantoul has been so gracious to host us there, but they do have their city meeting the night before our election day always. So safety and security of our equipment is becoming incredibly important. And so the township building was able to offer us their space and make sure that no one is in there the night before when our equipment is in there, ready to go for the next day. So. And we did send out cards for all of those to every single registered voter. So it wasn't like a household card or anything. So if you were registered, you got a card for those changes, so.
All right. Commissioners, so.
I'll make this one pretty clear. We had RTND Lake Region meeting here yesterday. I only talked about two of the things I thought were pretty interesting. We had Rebecca McFarlane from the Stansfield Council, and they're doing the, they've got, working with K-State, where they call it the 105 Project, all counties in other words. But they're doing, they're working with the communities and towns and so forth to facilitate basically the engineering department and other things at K-State, and allowing them to get some free information and help through them. And I think they've done one in Melbourne, and they've done one over in Miami County. And the project so far, just getting started. But it sounds like a real good deal for the small. We've always said, county is always helpful when we could, because we know these small communities can't afford a lot of the extra help. And just like Pat does with planning and zoning, a lot of times he gives a little help to the community. And, and our public work does a lot of that too, so. But anyhow, the other one, I always heard about Kansas work and Paul, but I didn't. I'm not going to try and explain it. Someday we ought to have him. He's very interesting. They do a lot of things I didn't realize they do. And Paul is the vice president of this region in that organization too. So he gave us a pretty good, and I, Samir perked up pretty good in some of the things he listed that they do and offer. And at no charge, you know, just runs through Topeka and Commerce Department. And I won't go into some of the subjects, but well, you ought to have him sometimes. It wouldn't take him five, 10 minutes at the most to go over that like he did, but, but it was really interesting. And you seen the Kansas work truck around, big one? I didn't realize what they did either. We actually were down at Ottawa Library yesterday. I wouldn't even, I didn't just roll back and see the truck, realize what they were doing there. Like Paul can explain what that truck does, and goes all over different regions, and they scheduled to be there. And so that's all, but we all have him talk to us about it sometimes. So he'd even be on, on the coast circuit TV to kind of emphasize people. Paul does a lot of things we don't, and he doesn't talk about a lot of things. He does, he just doesn't. So, but that's all I got.
Well, I went to our CND meeting too, and Don pretty well covered most everything. One thing that I didn't realize that Paul does is through Carlin Works is if a company is thinking about closing their doors, they got a system where they can come in and help employees relocate to, you know, in other jobs, either help them do resumes or job sources or something like that. It's just another thing they did. Kansas 105 Project was to help a lot of the technical work is necessary if you want to start a business or, or invent something. Some issues with, I guess you'd call a rent tank, they can help you with that. So that's one of the projects K-State is doing. And Don, did you do a bike program too yesterday or?
Yeah, well, I got everything out of your way out there. We had an old trailer out there, we had to fill a bunch of junk in, and I got it all cleaned out. It's all cleaned out, and we're going to Lansing Friday. I know I had an appointment to make somewhere here in town, and the gal was making an appointment out and said, well, I can't. Well, I know one thing, it was our ribbon cutting up there. And I told somebody else that too, says, well, I can't do it that day. I'm going to prison that day. So, you know, she said, you're going where? I said, no, I explained to her how we did the bike program. We use Lansing and Ellsworth, and it's been a good program.
That's all I got.
Last Wednesday, I had a KAC board meeting in Eldorado. It was in Eldorado because our president this year is from Eldorado. Most of that meeting was putting together our legislative policy for, that will be presented at the KAC conference in December. I did do the radio spot last Thursday, so if you're up on Thursdays at 7:10, and you want to know things that are going on in the county, that's a good way to, and it's not just commissioners, but different department heads or people around our organization to give updates. Last Thursday, I also had the hospital board meeting, and they actually have had a couple of interviews with administrators. And they will be onsite meetings in October, so maybe they're closer to actually getting an administrator here, although they continue to move forward and get a lot, a lot of stuff done there. Last Friday was a chamber coffee for the Franklin County Optimist Club, who has been 50, has just celebrated their 50 years anniversary as an optimist club in Franklin County. It's time to get your COVID booster or, and your flu shot. If you are interested in going to the Health Department, they can take care of both of those. And go Royals, awesome. Hopefully, we get one more win, and we'll be moving on, so that's all I got.
Is there a motion on that, Matt?
One. I beg our communications department and the city of Wellsville and the chamber did a really good job promoting the ribbon cutting. And it's one of them odd situations where you have a big city opening or something, and a county opening or something, and they're right next to each other. So they did a great job. That's all I got.
Need an executive session, help me out with the motion?
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to say 10 minutes with the county commissioners, county administrator to discuss a personnel matter involving non-elected personnel pursuant to the coma exception that allows such discussions.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, we'll go to that, 926. Back out of executive session, no actions taken, no decisions made, and need to motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.